Welcome to our November 5th Gilbert Study Session, Gilbert Town Council Study Session. And we have five present, one on the line, and one council member that will be joining shortly. I would like to begin by looking at our assignments, and there are not many. Councilmember Daniels, if you could accept the assignment to introduce the scouts. Councilmember Peterson, if you could take the assignment to do the pillar of the month. And Agenda Item Number Three, Councilmember Cook, if you could help with the recognition. Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Well, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda Item Two, I understand, is a presentation, and we will look to Kurt Sharp to help coordinate that with our Gilbert Education Foundation. The other thing that I wanted to do before proceeding into some of the agenda items, Kurt, if you're over there, let's talk calendar for a minute. So this is future meeting discussion, and we'll do this on Thursday night, too. Remind our citizens, remind those who are here in council chambers, that Street of Dreams continues, and this is for individuals from throughout the United States and the state of Arizona to come and visit Gilbert. And as you see on the screen, that goes to December the first. The next slide is a reminder of some community events, and I bring this up to also talk a couple of details with council members that, well, for all of us, this Thursday, Veterans Day, 11:00 a.m., will be the community celebration. Saturday, the East Valley Veterans Parade, several of the council members and family members involved with that. The Gilbert Days Rodeo and the parade continue. And we have after the parade, on November 23rd, the Red, White, and Blue Festival, which is down at Town Hall. It'll be our first time to do this festival, and so we need to spread the word, let everyone know that near the end of the festival, early evening, will be a laser light show that will be on par for our sons and daughters, who are younger, of a huge fireworks show. And so we want to spread the word to the community to come on down for that. And then Nights of Lights, December the 6th. In addition to that, to the council, and this will be important for the public, too, we did receive word that there is a question to the council when we enter December. We will continue to have our December 3rd study session, and there are a couple of key topics for that meeting. The Parks Master Plan will continue, some CDBG funding and other things. But the council meeting on the 5th, we are talking about moving it to the 12th. Some have responded to Vicki or to our town clerk Kathy Templeton, and those who are here, as you're checking your calendars, and maybe you need to get back in touch with Vicki tomorrow or later today, but while we're talking about it, does that work for the group tentatively?
I'd prefer it to stay.
Okay, but if you had to.
If I had to, I'd make it work.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
We have design review that same night, so I'd prefer the other week, but I can work around it.
Okay. All right, we'll continue to check on that. And then, Councilmember Cook, did you have feedback on December the 12th yet?
I have to get through it.
Okay, thank you. The other item, this will be new for each of you, and if you could let Vicki or our town clerk know, on December the 9th, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., it's time for this town council to smile and have our council pitcher. And so this is the first time you've heard that. The reason why 5:00 to 6:00 is three of us will be here for a 4 o'clock meeting, and the thought was that we might just leverage that from 5:00 to 6:00. So you don't have to answer that right now, but Monday night, December 9th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., if you could let Vicki know that tomorrow. And then, back to the calendar up on the board, Councilmember Daniels, on that parade, we don't know the exact time, but last year was it 8:00 a.m. that council members and family got together? Does that sound right?
Yes, Mayor, 8:00 a.m. is when we would need to line up, because that's when they close Gilbert Road. In addition to that, if you can let Kurt know if you and your family will be attending, and how many of you will attend as soon as possible, because we're trying to arrange transportation, but Mayor, you're missing the Gilbert Days 5K on your list.
Oh.
And historically, there's been some council member competition involved with the Gilbert Days 5K, and so I'd like to continue that tradition and perhaps not be the only one that attempts to run that.
And Vice Mayor Cooper is in it, right?
Yes, historically.
And is Mayor Lewison this year's?
I think he should be.
And is this Friday night, November 22nd?
No, it's actually the 15th, right?
Okay, Friday night, the?
15th.
15th.
4:45, I think, is start.
4:45 p.m., so we've got the, you know what might even happen? We'll have this conversation continue after, but the town manager, getting ready for a basketball game on the 16th, he may want to be getting revved up on the 15th to run.
Walking kind of slow over here, I don't know, Mayor, if he's going to be able to...
So thank you. So I think what Councilmember Daniels just reminded us, that all seven council members are not only encouraged, but there's a competitive?
Element.
Element to this. All right, thank you for that reminder. And on the parade, let's just phrase that a little bit differently, by assignment?
Correct.
We're in the parade, now we just need to say to Kurt how many are coming from our family.
Correct. And then there's one other upcoming event, and that is the Festival of Trees being held at Santana Mall again this year. And this year, it's, the display days will be the day after Thanksgiving, so Friday and Saturday, and we've been asked as a town council to collaborate for a tree. So via email, Kathy will be, Vicki, I know, I don't know why I got that assignment out of this council.
Well, we'll help. The males on the team, we can help.
They might need your wives' phone numbers, so.
But that's the Friday and Saturday after. Very nice, thank you. Good. Anything else on the calendar that needed to be shared? Okay, thank you. The agenda items, before we talk about the system development fees, we, I have asked our town leadership to be prepared to talk to us, and I realize this is under public hearing, and so we will have the public hearing discussion on Thursday night, but I did have a few questions based on feedback that was coming related to Agenda Item 27, building codes, and Agenda Item 29, railroad quiet zone. In addition to that, I'll start with Councilmember Peterson, are there some, especially on the consent calendar items that you wanted to discuss today? Seven, okay, good. Vice Mayor Cooper? Councilmember Taylor? Councilmember Daniels? And Councilmember Cook?
I have none.
Okay. I also wanted to add six. So let's go in that order, 6, 7, 27, 29, and then we'll see if that takes care of getting ready for Thursday. So on six, this is, of course, something that could have been done Thursday night, but just in case it was not pulled, I thought it would be good for public update as to what is the status of six since we last had this presented in a council meeting.
Mayor, council members, we had worked with Gilbert Public Schools. There was an ongoing interest by one of the private swim school providers, Evo, to look to extend his current arrangement at Gilbert Junior Pool for one more year, and the proposal he took to Gilbert Public Schools is that he would absorb all of their operating costs as well, so that the town and Gilbert Public Schools' costs would all be covered by him. In addition, due to the fact that there was some maintenance requirements for that pool for ongoing use, he has agreed that he would do the drain repairs that are required at that facility prior to continuing use. So as we move forward, if you are in favor of this, there are two different pieces to the motion. One would eliminate Gilbert Junior Pool from our current IGA with Gilbert Public Schools, and it just removes that from our operating agreement with them, leaves all the other pieces in place, but then by approving the second motion, it then constitutes a new agreement between, a third-party agreement between us, Evo Aquatics, and Gilbert Public Schools just in relationship to Gilbert Junior Pool itself exclusively. Therefore, at the end of the one-year operation, then we would again move forward with demolition of the pool.
Thank you. The Gilbert Public School Board has met or will be meeting to make the same approval?
Mayor, they are scheduled to meet on November 12th, and they will have the same proposal in front of them as well.
So if the council approves it, the board approves it, full speed ahead?
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else on six? Agenda Item Seven.
Mayor, I appreciate staff's patience with me on this. I did ask some questions, and I got some answers.
And Councilmember Peterson, just, I think, again, for our citizens, this is related to a development agreement. Well, I want you to jump in your questions. Town Manager, give us the overview of seven, so that those who don't have this in front of them will know what we're talking about.
Okay. Mayor, members of the council, Agenda Item Seven is a development agreement proposed between the town of Gilbert and St. Xavier University out of Chicago to build a, or bring their university, establish a St. Xavier University campus in Gilbert, Arizona. This development agreement spells out the responsibilities of each party in this transaction, and who will be responsible for doing what. From a high-level overview, this would be the establishment of Phase One of the university campus. It's proposed to be roughly 87,000-square-foot building in the town's historic district that will accommodate up to 1,000 students from St. Xavier University at full capacity. It will also operate as administrative offices for the university. It's proposed that they will begin with a nursing program, a four-year and graduate nursing program, as well as their business school, and then by year three, they will also establish an education program per the performance requirements in the contract. And from there, we envision they will continue to grow and expand their course offerings at both the undergraduate and graduate level, as well as some online use. And that's it from a very high level. It's anticipated, under this structure, that the town would lease them the ground that the facility would go on for a 30-year term, as well as the town would cause the design and construction of the building, and then lease that building to St. Xavier for a 30-year term. St. Xavier would reimburse through lease payments the entire cost of that design and construction through their lease payments over the life of that agreement.
Thank you. Helpful overview. And Councilmember Peterson, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Patrick. I'm just trying to get a little more clarity, and first of all, I am very impressed with the agreement. I'm impressed by the university. I'm excited about the idea of university downtown. I think that that would be great, a great addition to our downtown. I'm just trying to get some of these specifics figured out. I understand that because we would be leasing the building to them, that there's no property tax because we're the owner. What I'm trying to understand is, would our other nonprofits in general, if a nonprofit owns property, are they exempt from property taxes?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I'll ask town attorney Michael Hamlin or special counsel Susan Goodwin to respond to that.
Yes, generally nonprofits, 501(c)(3) are. I'm not a tax attorney, but as to, so I'm really referring to exemptions from the government property lease excise tax, but I believe that generally, yes, nonprofits are tax-exempt under federal law and state law.
Okay, that's something I, if we can just...
Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Taylor had some updates.
Yeah, I don't know that that's accurate. I help operate a nonprofit, and for many years, they were, you know, ours was paying property taxes, so we might just want to double-check that, maybe I'm...
We'll do that before Thursday.
And I understand for the GIPlet, if you will, that 501(c)(3)'s are exempt from that excise tax, but in general, property taxes owned by a nonprofit, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of whether or not they would normally pay a property tax. Let's see. The other questions I had were on the construction sales tax. We're going to be contracting, are we going to be contracting directly, and if we are, are we going to be charging ourselves the sales tax so that it's a part of the budget? Because as a general contractor, our subcontractors don't charge us the sales tax because they know we're going to pay it on the total amount, and so that's the way that process works. So if we're the ones contracting out, I'm just wondering, are we going to be charging ourselves the sales tax so it's part of the cost, or how does that work?
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, right now, the way the agreement is structured is that we will bring back the master project budget to the council for approval prior to commencing construction on the building. The way it's anticipated right now is that any charge, any taxes, any fees, whether they be building permit, system development, will be charged to this project as would be the normal course of business, and then St. Xavier, again, through the lease payments, will repay the town for all of those costs.
I understand that, but what I don't know is if, if we are contracting out, I mean, I don't know any facilities. So we built the Freestone Rec Center. Did we pay a sales tax when we did that?
Let me, Special Counsel Susan Goodwin?
I guess we'd be charging ourselves, or how does that work?
Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our contractors are responsible for construction sales tax as part of their construction project, I believe.
That's correct, even on our own projects.
So the amount we pay them apparently includes the sales tax?
It includes an allowance for that obligation that the contractor has, to the best of my knowledge. I'm going by history, not recent review of this, but that's...
All of our contract forms provide for that.
Okay, so in essence, what we end up doing is paying a sales tax that comes back to us when we contract that way, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. One of the main things I'm trying to really get a better sense of here, there's a statement in the contract that says, "But for the agreement set forth in this agreement, St. Xavier University would not establish, maintain, and operate a university in the Heritage District or other location in Gilbert." It's kind of a disconcerting statement on its face. I would hope that we have the kind of environment in Gilbert that universities would want to locate here, whether or not we have some kind of a development agreement with them. But just taking it at face value, I'm trying to understand what really is their incentive? What's the special opportunity here that's, because, you know, they're paying pretty much the full cost, and what is it, what are they saving over building on their own by working with us?
Sure. We viewed this as a partnership and a collaboration between the town of Gilbert in meeting and identified need for higher education within our community to serve on a number of levels, but as well in regards to specific performance requirements on their part to bring their nursing program, and there's a demonstrated shortage in nursing, of nurses, within the greater Phoenix metropolitan area. St. Xavier has a nationally accredited or certified center of excellence for their nursing program. They're one of less than a handful, or about a handful, of universities nationally to have one, as well as a fully accredited business school, and then they've got a very strong and reputable education program as well. So we had certain key things that we were seeking from a higher educational partner that we found in St. Xavier. In return, they are entering a market that they don't have as good of an understanding of as we would, so we really viewed this as a collaboration in which we would both jointly hold each other to certain standards to make this a successful entry into Gilbert's market, but that is not, this is not something they were considering on their own without such a collaborative arrangement between our two parties.
So, and this was the trouble I had with the answer before, a lot of it focuses on what our incentives and what we're getting out of it, and I agree, there's a lot of great things. I'm just trying to understand, so their unfamiliarity with our market and just having a partner to work with, or why would you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, there's one last aspect to that. So if, in regards to what type of incentive they receive, the only one that we could identify is our cost of capital would be lower than what their cost of capital would be, so there would be some advantage there for them having a lower lease payment, so to speak, because of our lower cost of capital.
And why would that be? Wouldn't we entertain, if they wanted to apply for a tax-free municipal bond through our IDA, certainly we would help make that connection if there was a private lender?
We may still use our IDA for this transaction. We haven't settled on the finer points of those details, but we could very well end up using our IDA, but it would still be a town-backed revenue bond issue.
I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. So if we're borrowing the money as a town?
Correct.
It's going to be a cheaper kind of financing than if they, even if they work through an IDA to get financing, they likely have a higher rate on the interest they pay? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. That's helpful, thank you. So one of the things I was trying to get a little more clarity on was the permit, plan review, and inspection fees normally apply, but in this case, we're the ones building, so are we charging those to ourselves, or what are we, what are we doing with that, or is that, is that going to end up not being charged?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I had a similar conversation with our town attorney and our special counsel. It didn't seem to make much sense to me either, but yes, we will charge them all of our normal fees, and then they will repay those costs through the lease payment. So in essence, we will be paying ourselves, but we will pay all of the normal fees.
And the same would go for the SDFs, correct?
Correct.
So we're going to charge it to ourselves, but that would be a cost we would include in the budget, which their lease payments are based off of?
That is correct.
Okay. Let's see what else I had. I noticed that there was unforeseen changes. The town is responsible for the cost of unforeseen changes, or change orders, if you will, and, but you did clarify that there was a 10% contingency built in to the budget, and I think that's great. I guess my next follow-up to that question is, what is the typical percentage that we see on a project for unforeseen changes?
Yet, we're going to carry a 10% contingency all the way through construction. It's our hope to save as much of that money as possible. Right now, we are at the very beginning stages of what would be known as the program stage of design development, in which we know the space that is needed for their university. Beyond that, you then move through various stages of schematics in which you would lay the building out and determine configurations and space adjacencies, and it'll be envisioned to be a four-story structure. So we would, we would put the puzzle together, so to speak, with the space needs. We'd then move through design development, which is identifying systems and actual building enclosures, mechanical systems, electrical systems, and the construction documents where you would actually draw up the plans that your contractors would use in the field to construct the actual building. At each stage, you start out at 10%, at each stage, you then would go from about a 10% to maybe a 7%, a 6%, down to a 3%, and then you'd stay at a 3% contingency all the way through the final design stages to just make sure that you've got a little bit of cushion for anything that is missed or not anticipated. And then with construction, it's typical to carry a 3% to 6% contingency for any unforeseen conditions that would occur. Subsurface are usually one of your biggest areas of unknowns, and then as well, in the field, if you get in and something wasn't drawn, as it's drawn or as it's laid out in the plans, just from a constructibility issue is impossible. So maybe we need to spend a little bit of extra money on redesign or reengineering or use different systems that may cost a little bit more. So we think it's prudent to just carry a 10% contingency all the way through this project to ensure, to give ourselves the best likelihood there will be no overrun of the budget, and at the end, you know, our goal is to have as much of that in savings as possible.
May I add something to that, though? This was specifically limited to change orders for unforeseen circumstances, which is a defined term in the contract. It's not just any old design change. So most, I would say, well, an awful lot of change orders are designed change orders, but we thought 10% was enough of a cushion for unforeseen circumstances.
I guess I'm trying to find out what the basis for that percentage is. If we compared it to our previous track record, now what's the likelihood that we would ever exceed that? Do we have any data on that?
Yeah, we will, you know, this building, every construction project's unique, given, you know, if it's civil construction, if it's building construction, and that's why we will bring back the actual construction budget, that total master project budget for your approval prior to actually beginning issuing bonds or beginning construction. This is just, as Susan had mentioned, at the early stage, to lay that out in the documents, but we'll bring that actual budget back to you.
Did we ever find an answer to what the fair market, because now we should be able to, we have a rough estimate of the budget. Obviously, that's going to change as we go forward, but based on our current estimate of the budget, that sets the lease rate. How does that rate compare to the fair market rate for a similar building? Did you ever get that number?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we are working on that. I'll have that in time for Thursday night's council meeting.
All right, and I guess the last question I would have on this is, do we have any kind of a sense of, when we, when we were looking at the budget crunch a few years ago, everything was on the table. One of the things that was considered, at least briefly, I don't know how seriously, but was selling off Freestone Rec Center, and one of the things that was pointed out by staff was that we owed more on it than the private market was willing to pay for it. And I certainly wouldn't want to be in that situation with any building, so do we have any sense of what the, would we have built-in equity by the time it was, you know, built? Would we be upside down a certain amount? If so, how much? What can you tell me about that?
I can tell you, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, the Freestone Rec Center is a much different animal than an academic/office building in regards to its market value, what type of revenues could be generated through that facility in the private sector as to whether or not, you know, then tying a value back to that. With this agreement, St. Xavier, if we should decide to part ways, and I know you're aware of the liquidated damages clause, as well as they've got to provide a year's worth of transition for the students, and then we've got a year's worth of debt service built in, so it's our opinion that two years, in essence, worth of coverage, as well as some money to help us cover our costs of finding another university to come into that space, is more than adequate to provide coverage for that. But more specifically, to your point, we can, I'll work with economic development and see if we can get a handle on the value of that building, but I don't know it'd be entirely possible to tell you exactly what it would be worth under a resale condition. But it would be a viable property if the town should ever decide to sell it one day, much different than a rec center.
I just look at all the possible, I mean, the market changes so much, especially in education. There's more and more that's being done online, less and less demand for, you know, actual buildings. building space. You know, it could change the dynamics of the market. I just want to be ready for everything. If we end up with a property on our hands, I certainly wouldn't want, wouldn't want the taxpayers to be upside down on it. So anything more you can tell me about that would be very appreciated. Otherwise, I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other items on number seven?
Mayor Lewis, I did have a chance to take a look at Councilmember Taylor's question. He's correct. There's specific exemptions for educational and library facilities from property tax under the general property laws, but there's not a blanket exemption for 501(c)(3) or nonprofits.
Thank you.
Can I follow up to that, then? So is that any education facilities? So let's say they purchased this property on their own and they were going to build, would they have an exemption to the property tax because they were education?
It says libraries, colleges, school buildings, and other buildings that are used for education with their furniture and so forth, used, are exempt from taxation if they are used for education and not used or held for profit.
That's fascinating. Well, Rancho Solano, that's close by here, they are paying Gilbert property taxes, but I guess maybe they're not nonprofit, or I don't know. But it's education.
I don't know.
Okay, well, we can talk more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
And sometimes that taxation is a percentage of the building that's actually used. So if it's only half the building is being used, then they would pay 50% of the liability on that, you know. We had some experience with the county assessor on that. That's how they process that. So, excuse me. Question, Patrick, on maintenance, you know. What we've learned from the Big League Dreams partnership is that there's two different understandings of, you know, how to keep a facility at a certain quality level. And obviously, we have different expectations there. As I was looking, excuse me, dealing with a few allergies here. As I was looking through some of the provisions here, I didn't see any wording that really gives us a lot of input on, I know they file reports, and there's certain checklists of maintenance checklist, and I think those are good. But if we have a different level of quality in terms of the maintenance upkeep than them, maybe I'm missing it, but could you tell us how we wouldn't get into a Big League Dreams thing where?
Sure. Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, we actually talked at length about that. They are required to within a certain number of days. We debated putting those maintenance standards in right now, but not knowing what the actual building and the systems that will be selected and put in place are at this point in time. They've got to, within a certain number of days of the certificate of completion of construction being issued, to submit a maintenance plan to us, which we then have the ability to approve or deny. But we will, we are keenly focused on that.
Okay. Thank you. Then, I made a list of what, you know, we call clawbacks. Because the downside risk on this is really what the taxpayers would be on the hook for. And so I'm trying to make sure I totally understand that. So one year's worth of debt service, a one-year transition plan for students, and the $250,000. Is there anything above that that they would be on the hook for, for us issuing, you know, $20, $30 million in?
Sure. Mayor Councilmember Taylor, when I think of clawbacks, I think of something, an incentive that has been paid to a company to perform or to bring certain things to your community, such as a level of capital investment, number of jobs created at a certain wage level. Under this scenario, St. Xavier does not receive anything from the town by way of cash incentives or anything for job training, for job creation, anything like that. It's just the ability to lease this building from the town to then perform, you know, the duties that are spelled out for them therein. Should they go away, we do not anticipate we would have any trouble finding another university who would gladly love to come into a community like Gilbert and offer their classes and their programs. But there's no real incentives to clawback from them. We do have some general provisions in the lease and development agreement to provide for that transitionary period to bring someone else in.
Okay. Mayor, that's an area that I think is a weakness in the development agreement as it's written today. I just don't think that there's enough, that there, enough skin in the game on their side should they, you know, fall apart. I think there's an assumption that we'll fill it with another program right away. And maybe that's true, but if we're saying business and nursing, you know, nursing facilities are, you know, specific to, there's labs and there's, you know, certain requirements there. And so you'd have to get one that fits. The business one would probably be a lot easier to drop an engineering program in. So I think we just need to look at that. Then the other weakness, I think, in here that I'd like to see if there's a way to strengthen is, I think we're trying to manage this a little bit too much with the 80% requirement. I mean, there's a lot of schools that are going, you know, to online, and they'll be, you know, at the campus certain times, and how that mix, I don't know that we should be managing that business, especially that, because that has to do everything with student enrollment. And student enrollment has everything to do with paying the lease. So when we get, there's other places definitely I think are strong, but that particular one, I don't think is really wise to have in there. But that's just my opinion on that.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, and I can follow up and have a definitive answer for you. One of the considerations in having this in the downtown is to drive employment in our downtown Heritage District, as well as that student body traffic for the overall benefit of the Heritage District. But that 80% requirement, it is my understanding, that's a requirement of the state of Arizona for higher educational institutions. So it's not one that we've placed on them. It's one they've got to comply with at the state level. And I don't know if Susan or Mike, that was my recollection on that particular item.
I think that's what St. Xavier told us. But the driving force of the whole agreement for any incentive that we would give would be to put bodies downtown. So that was a big part of it. But St. Xavier did tell us that that 80% number is required.
And Mayor Councilman Taylor and other members of the council, what we were concerned about was not having, you know, like a video center where everybody takes classes online. We wanted to bring people downtown to live and work and be educated here. So as to, as, you know, yes, there may be a trend to go remote educational facilities, but that wouldn't assist us in that, in that important goal.
What I wanted to clarify, too, is they put that verbiage in there. We did not initiate that. And it's a good point, and I don't know if we want to change that because they initiated it, but please.
Well, just, and I appreciate the vision on that, but if, you know, jobs are not paying the lease. It's the student enrollment that would be paying the lease. So, you know, there's probably other ways to get jobs down there, but, you know, just having, you know, teachers or instructions or administrative, they're not the ones that are going to be paying the tuition for the lease. So if the objective is, you know, starting to migrate towards employment, then our lease payments are at more risk. I think we just need to be aware of that.
Okay.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor, to that point, I was just going to say that, let's say, five years from now, St. Xavier changes their model. This is, that's, that's an amendment to a development agreement that I don't see would be prohibitive of them moving forward. And so that, to me, is sort of one of the easy things. If they gave us that number and it's accomplishing our goal and theirs, I don't feel a need to mess with it unless an instance comes up, and then they can come back to the council, whoever that is, and have that type of discussion.
Mayor, members of the council, I can tell you this, as we all know, this process has been a year and a half now. We have spent a considerable amount of time on both ends of this equation to make sure that we've got an agreement that is something that brings success to both of our organizations and our communities. They're one of the oldest universities in Chicago. They've been in operation for over 160 years. They've got an excellent track record for student achievement and the quality of their education. So I can tell you, no part of this agreement was taken lightly by them and no obligations placed upon them. There are things that we, we had in here at one point that we then backed off on because I think we generally believe that they would hurt their ability to be successful in our community. But, but everything received considerable scrutiny.
And to Councilmember Taylor's comment about the clawback, which I think in putting more value to the town, that's a good comment. As you said, though, this is a year and a half discussion. I, I think the feasibility of doing something by Thursday night is probably low probability. And yet, if you're St. Xavier and wanted to present to the council that they do feel like they're putting skin in the game, would they have any comments you could share?
Well, part of the agreement, in the first five years, they've got investment targets of their own. They've, they will have to have met, invested about $36 million in the operations of this campus through the first five years, through program offering, salaries, the lease payments. So they do have substantial skin in the game, so to speak, to offer, to bring the university here, to get set up, and to offer those courses. It's something that is unique to ours, as well as they will also be required to establish a capital fund and an endowment fund to support scholarships and ongoing support of their programs, as well as future construction projects on the campus. There are also scholarship and grant requirements for Gilbert residents who would like to attend St. Xavier University. That, that value is somewhere in the neighborhood, depending on enrollment, around $10 million through five years in grants and scholarships for our residents.
Thank you. Any other items? Thank you. That has good discussion and has had a lot of work going to it. And we are excited to have St. Xavier University coming to Gilbert. Agenda item 27, our building codes. As Kyle and Larry come to the podium, I might just give a quick comment. I know as a council, we are wanting this to be very open and to have as much input from the citizens as we can. And it certainly has happened. This is another similar to St. Xavier process that has been going on for a long time. I give a summary statement, and this is, again, for the public to understand, that this is something that has had hundreds and hundreds of hours of scrutiny, involvement from professionals, citizens. And what happened, let's say, a couple of months ago was, I believe, I would say, the council reached a point where we don't necessarily feel we have all the background, the experience to answer some of the questions that were being posed. And so a couple of months ago, it was, why don't we consider forming a formal advisory council that would help us and get into the details and come back and make recommendations? At our last council meeting, as the council looked at that, there were some feelings that, yes, that's what we said we wanted to have happen, but as we look at it, it all of a sudden came across as more government, more regulations, more time, and not as efficient. And so what we asked the team to do, which we'll have Kyle and Larry representing the team, was to see if we could make it less formal but accomplish the same purpose. And at the same time, we did have some agreement a couple of months ago, and it might be, as you come back and now report, of a less formal advisory council, that it was also asked of you to say, well, there's some things that we almost decided on. Could we do that on Thursday night? And then what we would call a strike force would then have the assignment, what we didn't agree to, they would continue on. And so that's, that's a summary of, for the public to know of where we were the last few months. And for Kyle and Larry, if you can now give us an update for Thursday night, because a question I asked of Kyle and Larry was, because our discussions need to be in the public, I knew that there had been some requests of the council of you. And in helping us get ready for Thursday night, what feedback do you have and what can we focus on in getting ready for two days from now?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Councilmembers, that's exactly right. We have had numerous requests from councilmembers for, with questions and for information. And so we did put together just a couple of slides just to help with this discussion so that we have some information going forward. First of all, council direction was to bring back the 2012 codes for consideration and to form a strike force to address the issues presented in August. Based on that, agenda item number 27 is the same motion that you saw back in August. We, we have formed a strike team, a strike force team. We have not met yet, but we do have names and contacts and are ready to move forward with that. Based on some of the questions that we've received from council, we've put together some options that you might want to discuss this afternoon. First of all, the strike team is, it is on their agenda.
Larry, let me just interrupt quickly. Councilmember Cook, we are now looking at a PowerPoint, and as we are viewing this, we'll try and give you a play-by-play, but we'll call this first one option one?
Sure.
Okay, please.
It is on the agenda for the strike force team to talk about the energy codes and the green codes. And so one of the options that may be prudent to talk about is, do we go forward with adopting the 2012 codes, with the exception of the green and the energy codes, until the strike team has had a chance to, to address that and bring back recommendations? Option number two would be to delay a vote, this came from another council member, to delay a vote on codes until the strike force has completed their evaluation and provided recommendations. And then a third option was to amend the current code, the 2006 code, to include less restrictive requirements from the 2012 codes. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
We'll call those the three options, and to our council, we could just stop and have those three options on Thursday, but for efficiency, if it's possible today to have some feel for, if one of those three is our favorite approach, then that will help put, you know, possible language in a motion or something that could be considered for Thursday night. So I'm looking for some direction, Councilmember Taylor, then Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, can I just ask Larry a follow-up question on, with the strike force? Was there any guidance? I can't remember if there was any timeline or boundary set to say, needs to be addressed in three weeks or four weeks, or some kind of turnaround. Was there anything that you're aware of?
The timeline that I recall was, was by the end of the year.
End of the year, okay.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I'm actually very, I'm grateful that I had a new thought on this. It's actually option three, and I thank staff for putting it up there. But I want to explain it very briefly, as briefly as I can. If we simply adopt the parts from the 2012 that either reduce regulation or clarify it, the effect is, it would allow builders to submit according to the 2012 codes if they want to. But then it would also allow them to submit according to the 2006 codes as well. So for those where consistency and economies of scale are more valued than reduced regulation, they can submit somewhat above that minimum requirement. For those where the reduced regulation is valued more, they can go through the trouble of changing their plans for a Gilbert submission. This allows each builder, in each case, to decide if economies of scale or reduced regulation is more valuable. This also makes sure that a minimum standard of safety is maintained. If it was safe enough for 2006, then why not for 2012 or vice versa? And this could become a pattern for future code versions. As new codes are released, we can adopt the portions that are less restrictive or provide clarifications so that builders can continue to either change with the times or have reduced regulation as they think best serves their customers. So that was, and we could do this in conjunction. I'm very happy, I want to hear what the strike force comes up with. But we could do those amendments, our team, or whatever we're calling it. But anyway, then they could come back with additional amendments, whatever reductions they think are acceptable as a, as a group, could come back as future amendments as well. So I do prefer the third option. I think that it allows the most flexibility. I think the only people that wouldn't be satisfied with that one would be those who think we need to increase regulations in certain areas.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Any idea, Councilmember Peterson, what, how many pages we're looking at? What, are we adopting 1,100 pages of the new codes and leaving the other 100 out?
I actually have, there's a limited list. You've got like 17 items.
That are less restrictive? You've been through the whole code?
Actually, this was with the help of staff. Remember when they presented how they felt overall it wasn't necessarily an increase of regulation, that there were reductions, there were clarifications?
That was just a sampling, though. That wasn't, to my recollection.
Well, then maybe we Well, then maybe we need...
Gosted effort. I'm just wondering how long that's going to take to pick out all of the things that are...
I don't know.
Someone might consider to be, and who determines that as well?
If we're not willing to...
No, who's going to be the one that determines whether something is less or more restrictive? Doesn't it depend on the type of material being used or whether or not someone wants to, you know, in your words, progress with changing times or not? I mean, I'm just trying to comprehend what is it that we're really talking about? Is this something that's going to take two months? Because if it is, then let's just move forward with the strike team. Every time we say strike force, I feel like I'm in Star Wars, like I need my kids to dress up in their Star Wars costumes. Strike team, I'd be more apt to go that route if it's going to take a substantial amount of time for us to figure all that out.
Well, to answer your question, the definition of less restrictive would be the standard that you could submit under the more restrictive one and still pass, but the vice versa wouldn't work. So that's how you measure it. You find out which one is less restrictive, which one can, if we apply that standard, the other standard could still be used and passed. So that's how you would do that. And for the most part, I've read through the ones that they've reviewed, and I agree, they're less restrictive. It's not too, I don't think in most cases it's up to too much interpretation. It either can be submitted under the higher or it can't. You can judge by which one is more broad and allows more flexibility. It's, I don't think it's that hard. And I do think we should be willing to go through it that thoroughly. We should. If we're going to adopt a bunch of codes, we ought to be willing to go through it and make sure we know what we're adopting.
And I don't disagree with that. But we've been doing this for a year and a half where we've been going through these codes. And now we're going to tell our staff not to move forward with a strike team that can assist them with that, but that we just want them to figure out which is less restrictive and then bring it back to us. In that case, and again, I do feel like this is worth an effort, okay? I've put a lot of time and energy into this, just like every other council member that's up here. But if we're going to move forward with this, let's just allow a process where there's collaborative input. And I think the end result will be similar, rather than just turning to our staff and then having them be under fire again, if you will, for recommending something that is or isn't, in someone else's interpretation, less restrictive. And so I think the collaborative effort, the collaborative mix of people in the room working together that understand this is beneficial so that our staff isn't then put, and council for that matter, isn't then put in front of this body where we're told, well, it is less restrictive, or you guys missed something. And we're constantly kind of going back and forth. I think we need to draw some ending to this.
A summary of what I just heard is...
I wasn't able to finish. She interrupted me in the middle. I would like to be able to finish what I was saying.
Let me just do a summary and keep going. This is more to that point of the conversation. What I was hearing is this option three, some of the strengths are simpler and, of course, less restrictive, which we would like for the business community. What I'm hearing Councilmember Daniels say is that when we set policy, we need to be very specific. And it sounds like your feeling is it would be hard to do that for Thursday night because the building codes are like this and the interpretation of what's less restrictive probably is not clearly defined, and therefore let the strike team do that work for us and come back and talk to us. But now, continue.
So I don't agree that it's hard to define. So a quarter slot is less restrictive than a dime slot. And the way you know is a dime will fit in the quarter slot, but the quarter won't fit in the dime slot. This isn't a complicated concept, and you can test it. You can run it both ways and see which way allows the other. And if it does, then it's the one that's less restrictive. So I do think it's doable. The staff's already done some of the work on this. There may be more to do, I agree. But if we're going out there making claims that it's not, we're pointing out all these things that are less restrictive, we ought to be willing to stand by the idea that we know how to do that. So, and I think we can. And I would say also that the strike team can still meet. This isn't, I, option one includes two steps. This Thursday, we do something, and then we wait for the strike team, and we do something else. I'm proposing option three with a follow-up of the separate step later. So it's not some strange, you know, thing. We're already contemplating something similar to that, so.
And one reason why I want to have the discussion today is to hopefully provide some efficiency between now and Thursday. So Mike and Susan, as you've listened to this, option three, we need to be very clear so that from a legal standpoint, whatever the council approves is put in writing, which we don't have it in writing right now. We have in writing what we had last August. And so, and of course, we can turn to Kyle and Larry in just a minute and see if we could put this in writing by Thursday. But from listening to this so far, from a legal standpoint, can we do option three by Thursday?
Mayor, members of the council, a motion can be crafted. And at Councilman Peterson's request, I have already crafted one that would enable him to either make the motion or amend the motion to approve a series with 17 items on it, a list of amendments that were consistent with the statements made in August about which new regulations were less restrictive than the existing regulations.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not saying I would, whether that will be convenient or easy to execute would be a question best addressed to Larry or Kyle, but whether it can legally be done or a motion can legally be crafted and passed upon has been addressed.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, hearing now, because it's not written up there in your proposal, that there is a second step. I mean, that's helpful information, but again, not clearly defined as an option. So we have step one of your option, but not step two of your option. And I think that that would be an important element to us making a comprehensive decision. Every single member of this council has been very clear about being for less regulation, business-friendly. The quantity of effort that's being done in this council to draw business, and staff for that matter, to draw business to Gilbert, it's an important element of what we do. To make a statement that there is only one way to accomplish this, there are multiple ways to accomplish this. And here is my fear with your option. We take our list of 17 and we stop there. That is not a comprehensive solution to the community. We've tried working through a year and a half-long process to come up with a solution and have failed miserably as a council. Couldn't come to a conclusion. We weren't making the public happy despite any and all efforts. We certainly haven't made the business community happy. To me, this is an example of what not to do as a council. So for us to simply walk down that same road again gives me heartburn. I would like to see us come up with a comprehensive solution, which I think has been presented here, and to move forward and put this issue to rest. We have lots of issues in the town of Gilbert and the quantity of hours and effort that are being spent on building codes. While important, we need to be able to put this to rest. And so that is my plea, I guess, if you will.
And Councilmember Daniels, would you be advocating for the option one and then let the strike force work out additional details, including whatever could be approved in option one, that if we needed to make future changes on less restrictive?
Yes, with a specific timeframe so that there is that collaborative effort that allows the community to proceed with input, that we have a date certain that we will be able to see and review this, and then again, make those amendments and changes as needed, and then put it to rest.
And to Kyle and Larry, a timeframe that would be reasonable. Have we had that discussion?
Again, the request from council, as I recall, was to, let's get this done by the end of the year. Again, that was with the understanding of adopting the 2012 codes and then moving forward with the strike team and that that team would be concluded by the end of the year with all of their recommendations. Which shouldn't be too difficult to do because I've broken down the 32 items specifically that we need to address. And I've broken those out into different categories, plumbing, mechanical. I think we can easily address those and have that accomplished by then.
Okay. And it gets back to our last council meeting, that also accomplishes what we were hoping is to get decisions made so there's consistency, so the home builders can rely on something. And we did not add more with a formal advisory council that might need to spend another year on it. I mean, those are some positives. And Vice Mayor Cooper?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in briefly on this. I agree that we have spent a lot of time on it. A lot of people have spent a lot of time on it. And that's, that includes our Gilbert business community and construction community, as well as those that are across the country have been in these codes very, very deep for the last few years. And so again, it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel. And we have excellent feedback already from our business community on what they wanted. And so to me, option one is a compromised position. I was ready before to move forward with everything except maybe the green, making the green voluntary. I'd even be willing to go with energy. So I feel like, you know, in a spirit of compromise to get something done, which I think is something that ought to be considered by all of us, that once in a while you have to budge from your position. We're not going to end up with unanimous approval on these things, but once in a while we need to actually work with each other. And I think that option one is, for me, that compromised position where I'm saying, okay, well, I don't really agree with this delay, but I'm willing to go this route as long as the strike team has a very narrow mission and timeframe, that they're not, I don't want the strike team to reinvent everything that's happened for the last year and a half. There's a specific list of items, which I actually think could be narrowed down if we really wanted to get into the nitty-gritty. But let's just leave the list as it is, and let's work through it and move forward in a spirit of trying to get something done so there's some certainty for our business community.
Councilmember Cook, I realize that through teleconference, you're helping and you're not able to see the PowerPoint slide, but as you heard options one, two, and three described, do you have some feelings you can share?
What I would like to do, and again, it's just from my prior time of making the recommendations for a more formalized process, from what I believe, what I heard from the three options, I would like to have the strike force, excuse me, the strike team actually meet first, make a recommendation for all of the codes as well as any changes that they would like to, you know, recommend to the council. That's what I would like to do. It sounds like option B is probably the one that I would lean towards.
Okay. Which I'd call option two, option B, the one works. Now, Patrick, this is a little bit unfair, and you may not have feedback, but I have not had dialogue with Councilmember Ray, but I know he wanted to have this agenda item discussed. Have you had dialogue with him to have a sense of his option one, two, and three?
Mayor, I have not had dialogue with him within the last couple of days.
All right. So to the six of us, and Councilmember Taylor, give me your thoughts, so that will help us prepare for Thursday.
Can I ask a quick question of Larry just before I share my thoughts? So when we met, excuse me, and then in council meeting, I remember a table that talked about more restrictive, less restrictive. How exhaustive was that? And if it's not exhaustive, how much time would it take for you to, you know, close the gap on, you know, the family of codes that we're considering here?
Those numbers, Councilman Taylor was, those were based on our significant changes presentation that we had presented. It wasn't totally comprehensive, but it did cover the large items in the code, the ones that we felt would impact businesses and contractors and so forth the most. The item, the 17 items that you saw earlier were strictly out of the residential code from that same list, but strictly residential code. I think there were 40 items of significant changes in the residential code. And of those, 17 of them were less restrictive. I think there were another five that were neutral, they were clarifications.
So how much time would it take to go through some of the others? I mean, are they fairly neutral, so they go quick? Or are we looking at months and months and months of analysis, or?
It would take some time, only from the standpoint of when we had staff go through all the codes and it was looking at all the sidebars and so forth. Councilman Peterson will know what I'm talking about, but it's looking at all the sidebars, all the changes. And then we were identifying at the same time which ones we felt were significant enough to not just train staff on, but to present to the public. So yeah, it would take some time to go back and review all of those.
Okay. So, well, that's helpful. I mean, I think the strength in, you know, the last proposal is that it does set a standard and communicate that we're going to be less and less restrictive, and that's a great message for the business community. And I appreciate it. I thought that we had done a little bit more analysis, but, you know, for us to do that analysis, I don't know that that totally scares me because I think that's worth it for us to keep the business community with the least restrictive but still proven and valid, you know, codes. And so that's why I'm okay with all of them, actually, but the third is positive as well because I think it communicates the best message. It doesn't stop anybody from voluntarily adopting or submitting plans under the green code or energy code of 2012 or one of their choice. I think that's also a strength in there because if they want to do 2012 and do those others, I think that's, you know, they're prerogative and it doesn't limit them, but it gives the widest amount of latitude to our business community to build. The others, I think the second one is probably my least favorite because I think there's some benefits that our business community can pick up right away with number one and three. And so as soon as we can get, you know, benefit into the business community, I think that's a good, a good thing because there are some, there is some relief on that. I think with number one, there's positives there as well. If we, I think I'll just, I think I'll leave it on that because I think I've answered my question on that, but those are my initial thoughts.
Okay. Larry and Kyle, on option three, I know that some of the concerns that have been expressed by the home builders is the uncertainty, and they're not really sure when they come to Gilbert what they're going to be submitting. And what does option three do for a home builder? Does it answer the questions? Or does it still give them so much latitude or so much of a range that it's hard for them to really know what to do in Gilbert?
I think if they understand our code and know the code, they would, they would understand it. We would be different than all the other communities around us. And so there may be some uncertainty there because it's not consistent throughout all the other communities.
Okay.
That can be looked at as a positive or negative, depend on where you're at.
So as a council, what if we do this approach? I'll propose it and then I'll see. Not that I won't have that comment, Councilmember Peterson, but I think for a study session, I was kind of hoping that we'd have one option that would jump out, and that's what we would discuss on Thursday. But I think it's to our, to Mike and Susan, if you could make sure we have motion language for option one and three. And Councilmember Cook, it's not that we couldn't have it for number two, but I'm not hearing the support for that. So I think have a motion on one and three, ready to go. And on Thursday night, Councilmember Peterson, we'll let you start by talking about option three. And we'll have some discussion on option one, and then we'll get a feel for where Councilmember Ray is, and I think we'll be there fairly quickly. Does that work?
That's wonderful. Can I make closing? First of all, I just wanted to point out, if we wanted to put on our webpage, you can submit under 2012, we can do that. It would be true. So people know what to expect. They know that the same plan they submitted in another jurisdiction, they can submit, and they know it will pass. So there's a way to deal with that certainty. And in fact, the idea for this came from a conversation I had with the Home Builders Association. So I'm quite certain they support it. I don't, I won't put words in their mouths in case I didn't quite get it the way they talked about, but that's where this idea came from. And as a builder, I just would comment, I'm not enjoying the 2012 codes. I'll just put it right out there on the record, I'm not. They're causing me a lot of grief, and I'm not enjoying it. And so it's not helping me. So there may be others who feel differently. If they do, they would still have that option under my proposal. And so as far as I'm concerned, I'm not in a rush for 2012, but as fast as we can adopt parts of 2012 that are less restrictive, that help businesses, I think that's great. Let's do it as quickly as we can. But we're going to have to come back with a follow-up from the strike team anyway. Maybe we do number one, but the follow-up later is also a vetting of the other idea. And we could go back to it if we wanted. and we could go back to it if we wanted. I don't know, but we're going to have to follow up anyway, and so I think it's worth to spend that time and find out, number three.
Thank you. Now, that's helpful feedback because as we, as we said on the council, you are in this business, and, and so that's good feedback. And I, I'm not trying to give another comment. I just know that some of the home builders have given feedback that because the other communities are doing 2012, and I, I don't know if that's for your business too, because you're doing it for other communities if, for consistency and not having to have two options, but thank you for those comments. So, I think for, for Thursday night, Kyle and Larry, listening to this discussion, whatever you could give us on options one and three that will help us, and if we can have the language that would work for a motion, we'll focus on options one and three. We'll include Councilmember Ray on Thursday night, and hopefully this discussion will have made it an efficient Thursday night. Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, are we able to get some of that wording prior to Thursday?
Mayor members of the council, Councilman Taylor, absolutely. I can get it done tomorrow.
I'd appreciate that.
And I'll email it out.
Thank you. Thank you. So, agenda, and to Kyle and Larry, anything we missed that you felt like needed to be shared today? Agenda item 29 is the railroad quiet zone, and I know, I'll give a summary again, this is coming back, and I believe, and council, we're not voting, this is public discussion, but I believe the council gave an impression to town leadership that the district thought of coming up with a way for funding for the railroad train quiet zone was not something the council favored. So, what we were asking for is what would it cost to do a train quiet zone in Gilbert? And then that would help us know, is it something that maybe we just need to say, okay, for the benefit of the whole community, it's a reasonable price, let's do it? Or if it is a price that was so high, all of a sudden we would say, it's unfortunate, but we're just not going to spend that. So, do we have, and I, I know I read the council communication, but I was still unclear, so I asked some questions. Could we have clarification on, for Thursday night discussion, what would be an estimated cost if we were to do it in Gilbert? And we'll start with that and then open up for other council members. Andy, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and council. I do have a presentation, but I'm just going to pull up the slide that has the cost estimates on there. I have notified several residents that this item is on Thursday's agenda, so I would, I would like to withhold the presentation till then. But right now, we are looking at about 3.8 million in terms of the, the cost estimates. So, that would be about 2 million for the vehicular roadway crossings, two at grade trail crossings, or their pedestrian trail crossings. And then at this time, the town has applied for a grant through MAG to do a crossing at Western, or Power Road, at the Western Power Line, and so this would be our match of $810,000. So, right now, our rough estimate is about 3.8 million.
And Andy, thank you. The clarification that will help me, that 810,000, is that the MAG? Let's see, is that the MAG?
It is the MAG grant for the Transportation Alternatives Program, and so that number might go up if we don't receive the full amount of the grant that we applied for. So, this was just our local match.
Would, would that mean that in voting on Thursday night, if we said we want to do this, we need to have the expectation that we would be allocating 3.8 million dollars from town funds, but potentially we could get about 800,000, so it might only be 3 million?
No, the, the 810,000 is the town cost for what we applied for. So, the total grant, hold on a sec here, it's on the next slide, was 2.6 million. So, the, the total grant that we applied for was 2.6 million, but the town's match right now is 810,000.
And that was my error. I misread that, but that's exactly what it says here too. So, we would still potentially be saying, if we didn't get the grant, we need to be prepared to spend the 3 point?
Yes. So, the, the 3.4 in addition to the, the 3 million here.
Okay. Everyone's probably understanding that, but this is helpful to me. So, 3.4 and 2.6, go to the second slide.
So, this is just for the grant at the pedestrian crossing at the Western Power Line?
Mayor, can I just, I just want to step in here. I don't understand why this is part of this agenda item. It doesn't make, it, this is a go-no-go decision on that trail crossing no matter what, and that's a separate conversation. And so, I, I got confused as to why this was in here, and it's clearly kind of confusing in general. I think what I'm reading in, in your staff report is railroad, railroad crossings are $3 million.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's what I think the question really is for Thursday night.
Okay. And then if you did this one trail crossing, that's a separate subject?
Separate subject, whether they're quiet or loud crossings, this one goes under or over, and, and it's totally different.
And that's what the grant that we requested is for that one rail, trail crossing?
Correct.
And Vice Mayor Cooper, just one more round for Lewis thinking. So, 3 million, thank you. Separate project, 3.4 million. And that's what those figures are. Okay. Councilmember Daniels.
Andy, can you go back to the slide previous? Okay, so roadway crossings, 13 of them cost $2 million, but the at-grade trail crossings, that's substantially more expensive for each of the trail crossings. Does the quiet zone necessitate a zone as it implies, as the name implies, or can you pick and choose which ones are and aren't? I guess what I'm asking is, because it's so expensive to do pedestrian trails, just wondering what the feasibility is of only doing roads, or maybe phasing this in? What's, how does this work?
So, first, Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Daniels, so first I'll address the cost discrepancy. We, staff believes that about seven out of the 13 crossings have had majority of the improvements done for the quiet zones, so that's why that number is lower, or, you know, lower relative to the pedestrian crossings. We could look at doing the different zones. Chandler actually has three different quiet zones, and I'm not sure whether that's to address the different costs or why that, that is that way, but that's certainly something that we could look at in terms of, of zoning the quiet areas to address some of these pedestrian costs.
And we can say this on Thursday night, but I'll say it tonight too. A quiet zone does not mean the train whistle won't blow. It just means they won't, they'll have less need, and, and yet it'll still blow occasionally, especially if the train conductor feels it's warranted.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor Cooper.
And just on the at-grail trail, at-grade trail crossings, if we don't put those in, trains currently sound their horn at those crossings?
That's correct.
Hmm, okay.
Councilmember Taylor.
Andy, this is what I was trying to catch up with you. I'm sorry, we ran out of time. Are those the canal, the at-grade? Can we name those two?
Yes.
Is that only, is there only two, or are those just two that we're talking about? Yeah.
Plus the one that's this.
Plus the, yeah. Those are the only two?
It's correct. Those are the only two.
Okay.
Currently.
Currently? I mean, are there more?
No.
Those are the only two in the whole?
Transportation master plan has more, but these are the only two right now.
Okay. Jen, say that again.
So, this will come back, is what you're suggesting?
There, there could be more. Transportation master plan, Parks master plan, I think has more suggested crossings, plus the one that we have in our packet that's part of this agenda item.
How many, any, how many more?
I don't know.
Two or three, maybe?
Anybody know?
Well, I don't, Eric, I don't know if we've even gotten there, but the chances, I mean, it's very difficult to get crossing, we wouldn't get any more at-grade crossings from the railroad, so I think it's probably moot.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the council helping my clarification. I think I'm ready, but Councilmember, Member Peterson?
Just a quick clarification. I was confused on that 810 as well, but that's not required as a part of the zones, right? We don't have to do that separated trail crossing in order to have the zones.
Yeah.
That's, I'm just, yeah, I was confused too. Just want to make sure.
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, Eric Gudarian, the Town Traffic Engineer. Since that trail crossing location isn't technically an at-grade crossing location right now, it would not be a part of a quiet zone to speak of because we're looking at grades separating it so we can make it a trail crossing.
So, it is a separate issue then?
Correct.
Okay. That helps. And then, can you tell me, how many households do we have in Gilbert total versus how many households do we have in the, I know there's some who don't have interest in the improvement issue, but I'm just curious about how those numbers look.
So, on the map that you'll see tomorrow, we estimated within a mile of both the main line and the spur that there were about 33,000 housing units. So, that's not people in those houses, and about 3,000 commercial properties within this red zone.
How many total housing units do we have in Gilbert?
Well, for utility bells, and this probably is, includes apartments, but 75,000, 80?
70, 80?
80,000.
All right. Now, thank you.
Okay. I need to get with the times. So, 80,000. And this is, I should clarify, that was the memory I had that the council was really not in favor of, of an improvement district. Is that a correct assumption? Okay. But it was worth asking that question, and it helped. Okay, thank you. All right. So, I feel like we're ready for Thursday on 29. Councilmember Taylor.
Andy, let me just throw out some feedback that I received from a citizen, and the question, it kind of goes to what sort of the equipment at an at-trail crossing. This person lives in the Farmhouse Meadows development, and he is right on the corner. He, you know, it's him and his wife, no children, and they're right there. And so, his thought was, depending on what's actually installed, it actually could be worse because, you know, you have the horn that is currently, he says, actually the rumbling is almost louder in terms of decibels than the actual whistle. He says, but if you're going to put arms, flashing lights, and bells, you know, maybe a full package, he says, actually, it probably would go worse for, you know, his particular home on that corner. And so, maybe you can kind of speak to that and, in terms of the equipment at these at-trail crossings.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Taylor, at this time, my understanding is we won't have all the complete information until we do a further, further diagnostic review of the specific equipment, but most likely it would be the flashing lights, the arms, raised medians so that people could not drive around the arm to, to run through the intersection when the arms were down. So, most likely that is what we would be looking at installing.
Okay. I, I think that would be important to know. We don't want to spend a million dollars to make the problem worse because he says, I'm trading, you know, dark for something still as noisy, and now I've got flashing lights in the, you know, the back of my house, and, but I, I support what Councilmember Daniel said in terms of let's maybe phasing as a reasonable way to do it, as we get more information and it makes sense, has a true value.
Would this also be back to what the council has asked for? So, we wanted an estimated dollar figure, and that's what's coming, and then there would be a detailed design that could also be discussed in the, in a public forum, in a separate meeting before we would actually spend the money, but we would at least know that the estimate is 3 million.
Mayor Lewis, that is correct. However, tomorrow, what we are asking for is direction as to whether you would like staff to spend about 150 hours on conducting a diagnostic review with the Federal Railroad Administration, Union Pacific, and ADOT, and any other agencies, and then possibly spend up to $8,000 if we have to reimburse the, the railroad for their time to help with that review.
And we, if we did do that, we would be doing it with the understanding that the, the estimate right now is 3 million dollars?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Does that do it?
Well, just a last question. I kind of got the feel from the staff report that, and under this financial impact comment, if directed to proceed, this project would be proposed in next year's capital improvement program with a start date of July 2014. So, it, it, it sounds like Thursday night's approval of you to continue to look at this actually slots it into the CIP, and when, doesn't talk about identifying a funding source yet, but you'd hope that that was part of it. And so, is that what we're doing Thursday night, is we're saying, yes, we want quiet zones in Gilbert?
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cooper, no, that is not what you would be doing. We would be bringing this back in steps. So, if the council wanted us to conduct the diagnostic review, we would come back with some better cost estimates, and at that time, we could talk about potential funding sources, the timing. This is still a three-to-five-year project, even if we put it, you know, in the next CIP, it probably wouldn't, construction wouldn't happen in fiscal year 15. So, we would still be looking at several years, but we would like to start having that conversation of when would you like to put it in the CIP? So, we would certainly be coming back to at least one more time.
And, and yeah, and I, that's very helpful. I, I believe on Thursday night, if we vote yes, that we are saying that we want quiet zones, and, and yet, as Andy phrased it, there's more information to be analyzed and there's more approvals that have to come, but if we say no, then we stop. And conceptually, we've said we want them. So, I, as I would vote yes or no, if I'm voting yes, I'm assuming that I'm saying, at some future date, I'm okay spending 3 million dollars, and yes, it'll be phased, and yes, I'll have to do additional approvals in the next three years. 29, we'll continue on Thursday night, but thank you. I think that helped us get ready. Back to the study session. Agenda item number two, we now move to is the Presentation on the Updated System Development Fee Study and Adoption Process.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. Nicole Lance, Assistant to the Town Manager in the Town Manager's Office. This evening, I have Dwayne Guthrie from Tishler Bice here, and we will be reviewing the land use assumptions and the Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which is part of the overall greater move towards bringing our system development fees into compliance with the new legislation that was passed as a result of Senate Bill 1525 a couple of sessions ago. As we move into the presentation this evening, I will be handing it over to Dwayne, but I did want to provide just a reminder of some context for this evening. Mostly, here in Gilbert, as you know, growth has always paid for growth, and that's been our prevailing philosophy. Essentially, the fair share of growth in Gilbert is covered by these development, system development fees. And so, as we move forward into this, keeping in mind that historically what that has done for Gilbert has allowed us to have one of the lowest costs of service rankings, an extremely low employee-to-population ratio, and by having these accurate and appropriate costs paid upfront, it's allowed us to have a lower ongoing cost of doing business and lower rates for other Gilbert services. And so, as we, as we move through this evening, and you'll see the initial kickoff part, there are some dollar amounts associated with some fees. These are preliminary at this point. Time and Dwayne will take you through those a little bit more. But really, as we move forward through this study, the policy decision is about continuing that historical practice of growth pays for growth, and what's the most appropriate way to do that for Gilbert moving forward? We aren't comparable to many other valley communities at this time, not just our growth pattern, but our current CIP and the infrastructure needs, as well as the timing of infrastructure we've put in in Gilbert in the past. We continue to lead the valley in new residential building, and we do have a very active economic development program. And so, as, as we look at the philosophy of the SDFs and how those are applied and what that means for our fees and moving forward, there is a potential for impact on how we choose to pay for growth-related projects. And so, while the presentation for tonight will focus on the land use assumptions and the Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which is based on our CIP, it's a really give an introduction to some of the draft fees so that we can kind of round out the picture. We'll also provide a timeline of next steps so you have an understanding of how we're going to be moving through this, and that'll kind of give you a full picture of, of how we're moving into compliance with this new legislation. So, at this time, I would like to turn it over to our consultant, Mr. Dwayne Guthrie with Tishler Bice.
Thank you, Nicole. It's a pleasure being here. We want to kind of give you some ideas of the changes, the rules of the game with the, with the new law, and what we're going to be doing differently this time around. The big picture for, on this slide is basically, we now have a two-step or two-phase process where we have roughly, starting now, eight-month process ahead of you where we'll be looking at several public hearings and chances to make changes to the proposed recommendations. So, we're not asking you to approve or act on anything tonight. We're just basically here to give you a chance to ask questions and, and be aware of what's coming, and we will show you just a more detailed slide in just a moment. But like Nicole said, we want to start off with the land use assumptions and Infrastructure Improvement Plan. We'll have a chance on public hearings and making changes to those, and then we'll go a second round of notifications and public hearings. a second round of notifications and public hearings and decision points on the actual fees themselves. So, we do have, though, a firm deadline at the bottom, and that's real important, and we do have very specific steps in the process, and those are all detailed for you in this slide. And the kind of the takeaway from this slide is, you have to realize that, basically, there's no flexibility in making the deadline if we hit any serious delays in the process. So, we went ahead and targeted specific dates, and so, you'll kind of know the expectation of when we're bringing action items to you and when changes will be made. So, the first, next time I'll be back is in December, on the 19th, for a public hearing on the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. After that public hearing, we'll have a 30-day time slot for consensus building, meetings with folks, and making specific changes. So, that'll happen between December 19th and January the 30th. So, at that meeting is when you'll actually be approving the first-step products. Now, we went ahead, like Nicole said, packaged it all together, because it's really, they're all integrated. You basically have to have an idea of how much you're going to grow and where you're going to grow, because that leads right into the infrastructure improvements, and it leads into the funding sources and how you're going to pay for things. So, they all go together, but we definitely have a two-step process this time around. So, after we approve the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan, then we'll do another round of hearings and come back again with another opportunity to actually make changes to the fees. So, the numbers you hear, see tonight at the very end of the presentation, don't get locked into those, because those will definitely change. We're going to be doing refinements for additional, what's called in the new law, required offsets. We haven't addressed that this time around. So, it's the issue about revenue credits, what other revenues are out there that we might use to pay for infrastructure? Do we need to reduce the fees? So, you'll be seeing those things, and we will be making changes to the numbers. Just a quick slide on the demographics. The council, the Association of Governments, did come out with some new Traffic Analysis Zone, TAS, numbers back in June, and those are the main drivers that we're using for our study, where we took their population projections and turned those into housing units. We took their job forecasts and turned those into non-residential square footages. So, the kind of questions you were just asking, like, how many housing units do we have in the community, those are all in the back of the draft study, which has been published on the website, and all those land use assumptions are there. You'll see down at the bottom, some very specific projections over the next five years. And what's different this time around is, you have a mandatory update cycle now. So, we basically, the next five years is our critical time period, because after five years, we have to be updating the fees again. Another change this time around is that the new law has a cap, basically, on a 10-year infrastructure improvement plan, whereas some communities in the Phoenix area did build-out kind of scenarios and build-out kind of fee allocations, we can no longer do that. We're looking at 10-year infrastructure improvement plan. So, those are two real important changes this time around. Also, just a kind of quick note, most of the fees are being done on town-wide basis, but for the sewer, we have recommended two different zones this time, so we'll have two separate fees for the north Neely Service Area, and then the south Greenfield Service Area. And so, that's why you see those on the map. Those are the only two fees that will vary by geographic area. Any questions?
Before you move on to our deputy manager, Mark, you're very good at this. So, I see that figure 81,437, number of residential units. What's the pop, we've been saying the population of Gilbert is 225,000. Aren't we 3.1 per unit?
All those numbers are in the back, so we can...
Oh, so you've got some population numbers?
Oh, yeah.
And so, I should just wait? Instead of saying that that calculation would mean 250,000, okay, I'll just wait. Sorry. That'll be our appetizer. Continue.
You'll actually have to go and read the back. High-level overview, the different types of fees that we have are listed down the left, and then, there are, the other columns are general methods. Basically, you have three different time perspectives. We can say what's out there that's already oversized and has surplus capacity on that we can do a cost recovery for. The ones in the middle are basically a snapshot of the way things are today. It's a relationship of how much infrastructure to how much developments in the community. And then, the other one is a plan-based kind of a look, and those are really driven by more engineering-type of studies. So, you have master plans for water and sewer, and those types of things, or a fire master plan, which kind of derives those things. What's a little different this time around is, for the cost recoveries, it has to be linked to very specific principal and interest payments. So, we've kind of changed the methodology around this time. You'll see that there's actually, you know, actual annual payments there, and so, the concept is, if you do a cost recovery, that money needs to go just for the specific principal and interest payments. And so, we're calling that a debt service methodology, just a little different term. So, in words, the kind of items that we've documented the existing level of service for, which is another new requirement in the Act, we've had to show what our current standards are for parks, pools, trails, and community centers. With different terms, different communities use different terms, some call it multi-gen facilities, activity centers. We're using what the law uses the term "community centers," and that's what we're calling them. We've also done that for the police vehicles and the communications equipment. And even for the plan-based ones, we've actually documented current levels of service, even though the need for additional infrastructure is driven by the plan and not by maintaining the current levels of service. So, here are the itemized things that we have debt for, that'll be in the cost recovery components. You'll see there's several for parks and recreation. The general government and libraries is one that we'll be using cost recovery for. Under the new law, you can no longer have fees for general government or town facilities, but if you've had those things debt-financed, you can continue to collect fees for the debt, and that's what we'll be doing. And then, for public safety, those are still allowable under the fee, but we're basically not proposing a lot of new buildings for those activities, but we will cover the costs for the buildings that we've already constructed with debt. So, here, in just bullet points, are kind of the summaries of the growth-related improvements that we'll be funding with development fees over the next 10 years. We're looking at improvements of about 53 acres of additional parks, and spending about $19.3 million on those parks with development fee funding. We'll do 76% of a pool, not 100%. That has to do with the current levels of service and the population projections and that relationship. It's about 6.1 million. Your capital improvement program shows that your specific project that you have in your CIP is about an $8 million project. We'll be doing additional 17,000 linear feet of trails, which is roughly three miles of additional trails at $2.1 million, and then 12% of a community center. That's another one of the items that has a specific cap in the new law. You can only fund, community centers up to 3,000 square feet with development fees. And so, basically, we're paying for three 25ths of a community center, because the one you want to build is 25,000 square feet. For police, we're doing, be buying additional cars and communications equipment, like handheld radios. For fire, we documented the current levels of service and projected out what the need would be, and it overstated what we actually need to do in the community. We're looking at expanding Station 7, which is the one with a circle around it, and new fees, our development fees will only be paying for the additional square footage, not the replacement of the, there is an existing station, but we'll be adding on to that. And then, the new station that we built in the next 10 years is 9, down in the south part of the town. You see the arrow pointing at that. So, the combined cost is about $7.5 million for the buildings and 2.7 for the additional apparatus to go with those stations. Now, I have some more detailed slides that you can look at on your own, but for the traffic signals and the water and sewer facilities that have specific projects listed out. So, we, this is a continuation, basically, what you have been doing on your system development fees for traffic signals for several years now, where we have specific interchange sections listed. There are also some improvements to the traffic management system that basically links those signals together. New growth doesn't pay for all those, they pay for only about a quarter of that, and that's based on the projected increase in travel in the community over the next 10 years. The other ones that have less than 100%, I believe, are shared with other jurisdictions. That's why those percentages are a little less than 100. I'll show you a couple of slides now for water and sewer, just to give you kind of a general idea. On water, we broke it out into a couple of slides. This one shows the water resources and treatment improvements. We're looking at additional surface water rights to continue to allow the community to grow. And then, at the bottom, the major expenditure is Gilbert's share of the water treatment plant, which is a major capital expenditure. And the way that we're doing the calculations on the water and sewer fees, the new law asks us to identify service units, and so, we're doing all of our calculations on the average daily demand in gallons. And so, basically, doing everything on a cost-per-gallon basis, and so, new development is just paying for their proportionate share based on the amount of capacity that they're buying. And so, it's all cost-per-gallon basis of gallons of capacity in the new plan. In addition to the surface water, we have the groundwater, some improvements for wells and storage, and additional lines to connect some of the major areas of the city. So, you'll see some 2-million-gallon-capacity wells in there with storage tanks and located in different portions of the community. And again, it's all converted to a cost-per-gallon-of-capacity basis. In the wastewater side, we have a little different situation, where we have enough capacity in the north plant, so it's just a buying-in or a cost recovery for that part. We need to expand the southern plant, so it will have a specific planned improvement for that. So, you see the cost recovery down at the bottom of the slide. And then, we also have components for the collection system, or the lines, the major sewer lines, and also a recovery well, where after the water's treated, it's put back into the ground. In the south, we're looking at expanding the Greenfield Water Reclamation Facility, and again, some more improvements are necessary for reuse and recharge, and you'll see those listed at the top. So, here are the numbers that I don't want you to pay attention to, but I know you will. We've kind of summarized the proposed at the top, with the current in the middle section of the slide, and at the very bottom, you'll see increase or decrease. And they're just, what's a little different this time around is, we're going to have two residential categories. Partly, that's due to some of the changes in the way the demographic data is available from the Census Bureau. So, the new categories will be for just a single unit, and then, the second category, used to call it multifamily, or some people call it apartments. The census lingo is basically two or more units in a structure, and so, that's what we're going with, because we have to document the average number of persons in a housing unit. And then, for non-residential, you'll see three categories listed there, just to give you kind of a feel for what the fees are. And at the bottom, you'll see the, some red numbers for industrial. The proposed fees do go down for industrial and commercial, about 10%. Office and other goes up about 33% under the preliminary numbers. Look a little quickly at the current and proposed, or preliminary fees for utilities. For residential, they're done on a per-housing-unit basis. For non-residential, it's based on the meter size that you need for your particular development. So, for the, it's a little different on the north-south, again, which we don't have today. Today, we have just one townwide fee. But in the north, we're looking at some reductions for residential, and then, for all meter sizes also. In the south, there's a slight increase, not very significant for residential, and decreases for the meter sizes. And the final slide is just kind of a summary for residential, both for single units in the two surface areas, and then, for the two or more units per structure in the bottom. You can see there's slight increases in the range of 9% up to about 23%, with the bigger increases for the multifamily or two or more units per structure. So, not a radical change. Updates, all comply with the new law. We tried to be very careful to make sure that we covered all the bases and have all the requirements in there. Again, we'll be doing refinements to the fees, so these numbers will change, but your main focus is, and what we're really hoping to see under, over the next 60 days, is comments on the land use assumptions. Do they seem reasonable and realistic for the next five years especially? That's the critical timeframe. And then, the infrastructure improvement plans. Are these really growth-related? Do we get the growth shares right? Are those the projects that we want to be spending the development fee dollars on? So, we're glad to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Taylor?
Maybe you've already proposed this, and thank you for the data, that's good. But I'd be interested in some of the historical information, you know, what's the trend line been, and what did it look through, you know, the wild years when there was just tons and tons of permits going on? And if you don't have that right now, I'd just be interested in looking at the trend line over maybe the last 10 to 15 years and compare it with what we see going forward.
Sure, be glad to do that. I don't know if Nicole could do it on the fly or not, or Dawn, I can't.
Thank you for that request. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I think in that request, it would also be important to Nicole and Dawn, if you guys are going to go through that process, to also have a matching trend line for the cost of construction. I recognize it's increased substantially over the last several years, and so, if we can help to put that into it, that might explain some of the increases, although I don't anticipate that it would include or explain all of them.
Councilmember Peterson?
Where can we get a copy of this? And then, is there contact information we can call and follow up with questions?
Sure. It's been published on the website, and that was done back, whatever the date was, at the very beginning in October. And that's why we're in their 60-day comment consensus-building timeframe right now. And as far as my contact information right now, Nicole is the project manager, so I'm working primarily with her, to her. So, probably the best just to focus comments through her.
And Councilmember Daniels, I think you just answered it. It's on the website, where?
Top right-hand corner, under the most recent, it's like the top bolded item, and it says, "Infrastructure Improvement Plan, Use."
Land use assumptions.
Thank you.
And then, back to our deputy manager. So, based on this report, which we now know where to find, what's the population of Gilbert?
It's, I did not, did you look it up? Okay.
Says 231 for 2014, but it does have a little bit of change in our actual, per-household, and it's different for rented populations and actual ownership, and it's all listed in C-11, I think.
Right.
I just read it while I was listening, following up.
So, 231,000. I update my spiel. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Mayor, just one question. Dwayne, you talked about the drop dead date of August. What happens if this extends past that date?
Then, you will have to cease collecting your current system development fees, and so, that would be basically a get-out-of-jail card, come in and pull all your building permits for free. That'll be not a very good situation.
That's a motivator. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? There was an additional item added to the study session, and it's the to-be. And I'll turn to Councilmember Peterson and others that might be taking this opportunity in the study session to give the update on the duties, responsibilities of the Design Review Board.
To-be or not to-be, right?
That is correct.
We have, Linda Edwards is here, if she wants to say some things about this, she's welcome to. It's just, you know, the Design Review Board, I think, is a pretty well-understood board. It's got some pretty well-defined duties. And so, I can go through that. You'll see, I've handed out a packet that has two attachments and a little bit of a summary there. So, I think, instead of going through each specific bullet point here, I'll point out that there are no working subcommittees of this board right now, and I don't think there's any special projects there. So, they have recently worked with staff and stakeholders to create standard plan transfer policy, commercial standard notes, and design guidelines for residential, commercial, and industrial. So, with that, I did want to talk a little bit about some other thoughts, just open it up for discussion. I've had a lot of, continue to get feedback from our business community and from others. Of course, I'm in the building industry, so I know some of these things directly, but there is concern with the difficulty of the Design Review Board. It can be difficult for them. And so, I specifically heard from our Small Business Alliance, and they were so gracious to go through the powers and duties in attachment B. There's some recommended, these are just draft edits, so, I mean, we want to start a conversation about this. want to start a conversation about this. You know, the strikeouts are things we've removed, the highlights are things they've added. And I've reviewed those. And I would sum up their edits as less focus on color and aesthetics and more focus on safety and function. There's more exceptions to some of the review requirements. There's more, it's more responsive to time needs. There's more transparency. And then the one-and-done concept that we discussed at the last joint meeting has been more incorporated. Now, this is a draft, so, you know, I don't know if this will need some additional work, but the concept is incorporated into the powers and duties. The power to deny has been removed, so it's approved with modifications would be the power that would be related to that. And so I don't know, again, we haven't vetted all of this with legal counsel. So the other thought that I wanted to just throw out there is, and I've heard about this, is Chandler does not have a Design Review Board. They mostly, from what I've asked a council member there, they mostly use a preliminary development plan reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the council. A lot of the other stuff is administratively reviewed. And then the planning commission does have a design review committee that breaks out when needed. So I'm not a big fan of regulating private property aesthetics, so anything we can do to reduce that regulation, I would be very much in favor of. So I just open up for discussion with the rest of the council.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to hear if the Small Business Alliance wants to clarify anything. But I appreciate some of the discussions here. Just since I've, you know, been here this year, I've seen the DRB hogtie a couple of projects that just didn't seem all that reasonable for it. So I would, I would love to see, do something like Chandler's doing, and maybe go without it for a time period and see if it, if anything breaks. You know, I think we could reasonably nest some of the things that are essential in either current staff processes or with P&amp;Z. Look at some of those options where there are things that we want to preserve there. But anyways, that's my initial thoughts on that. And I think it's, you know, something that we could maybe do without a little bit and evaluate it. Maybe we made a bad decision, we go back to it at some point, but...
Any other comments? Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, one thing that I've appreciated about Design Review Board, while there are probably our improvements that can be made, and maybe that's part of our training of some of our board members and things like that, that we could assist with. But they've been good about holding some businesses that have made promises to the town and holding their feet to the fire, if you will, making sure that if we did approve some zoning changes on certain conditions and certain zoning categories, that they've been willing to make sure that the businesses coming into town hold to their promises that they made that were, in some cases, conditions, if you will, of zoning. And not particularly in those words, because I just got the evil eye from Susan. Not necessarily conditions, but just things that they had promised to the community throughout their processes. And so that's one element I don't want to give up. I want to make sure that the businesses that are coming to town adhere to their promises that they've made in order to make progress, if you will. So I'm open to other suggestions. I'm not really sure how we would work through that as far as maybe staff works through it and comes back to the council with some recommendations. Maybe we try training of our DRB members first and see if things improve and allow us to work through some of those processes. But I, there are many things about Design Review Board that I appreciate. I'm not sure I'm willing to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
I appreciate the work that's been put into this. I'm going to read it thoroughly later. There's obviously a lot of suggestions here. And I think many of them may be right on point with the direction that we generally want to go and have been going for some time. We've been moving some things over to staff for more administrative reviews and some other things. My feeling on DRB is I appreciate what they do, and I appreciate the community that they have helped shape over the years. I think when you drive into Gilbert, you know you're driving into Gilbert, and you have a feel that is different. Other cities have tried to copy us over the years, and some of them are getting a little bit closer. But, you know, you can't discount aesthetics completely because they really do contribute to property values and the attractiveness of a community. And so making sure that we have high standards and hold people to them is not something I, and it may not be what's proposed here, but that's not something that I'm real interested in doing because I really do feel like they add a lot of value. That said, I'm sensitive to business issues and speed and timeliness, having worked extensively in the development community myself. And so I would love to continue to evaluate the one-and-done concept and some of these other ideas to streamline things. But I'm not a, you know, I'm not ready to shift gears completely.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, any comments you wanted to make?
I might look to town leadership for a moment. This is some great work. And so the council just received it. The public has not had access to this, but it's a summary of the Design Review Board, roles, responsibilities, duties. And so thank you all who were involved in the preparation. I assume, at this point, the group that benefits the most is the Design Review Board and those involved. And so from tonight, these comments, for sake of the scope of the study session, we'd probably end. I'd probably look to town leadership to take these comments and if there's some suggestions, improvements we can make to take the next step. If it is, at some point, to do a Chandler model, we'll be open for dialogue on that. But for tonight, we'll just look to town leadership to help us take these comments and suggestions and continue to make our Design Review Board even better. Is that an appropriate summary? Okay. Councilmember Peterson, thank you.
Mayor, just so that, and I don't know if staff feels they have clarity, can we at least get an indication from the council on if they think there does need to be work done? If there's a majority of the council that feels that way, then I think staff will have clear direction on whether or not to come back with some proposals for changes. I'm certainly in favor of some changes.
And I, you know, I look at these edits. Part of hesitancy that I give on a personal basis is there's a lot here. And so until I would do a further study, I'm not sure if I could give a detailed answer. But conceptually, yes. And to do away with the board, probably not immediately. I mean, that's not my thought process right now. I know the Chandler model intrigues me. I don't know much about it. But it sounds like they also have an efficient way to go from a step to step. Vice Mayor Cooper's comment is valid that a lot of other communities, where maybe we've been a little tighter, but other communities have looked at Gilbert to say, that's a model we would like to follow. But I realize, all seven of us continue to say we want to make it easy, efficient, businesses to fill comfortable, that this is a good spot, while we balance the standards and designs, I guess. So I didn't give a very good answer, but, in other words, I didn't give a succinct answer, other than I'm open to having this looked at in more detail.
How's this for succinct? I think all boards should review themselves and this kind of stuff regularly, annually, whatever it might be. And so I think we could hand this to them. And now, they're obviously not going to vote to eliminate themselves, although I will tell you, I was a part of a board, and I was chair of a board that did vote to eliminate itself, okay? So it can happen, but it's not likely. But we can at least get their input on some of these suggestions and others that may surface from others in the community.
Thank you. And that was much better said succinctly than I could because that's the purpose why we're going through the exercise. And so I just wanted to make note that in the month of November, as a target, to potentially report either in the study session in December or through email. So Redevelopment Commission and Human Relations Commission, and then the Industrial Development Authority. That was to do more work in November to potentially report in December. Thank you. That could be a stopping point for the study session.
So Mayor, to clarify, staff's next step will be to review these and then meet with DRB and begin the conversation with them, for them to review these and...
That's what Vice Mayor Cooper said, and...
Yeah, I think we want them to definitely review what the duties and all those different things are for each individual board, review that. But as far as going beyond that and making changes, I think we'd all like to read the document that we have before us. And perhaps at some future time, we can send a card around for signs or, you know, for signatures or whatever, and work that route instead.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, or town manager, do you think it would be helpful for council to give some input on the thoughts here before DRB's asked to review that, so it's maybe refined a little bit more? Or do you think that's...
Sure, that would be fine.
Take too much time?
Mayor, this is Attachment A. This is all powers and duties that are provided through code already. This is what they have already as their powers and duties. This is the special projects and duties that they've already completed. They have no ongoing special projects. So this document won't change unless we move forward with what could be a lengthy process in Attachment B. So I would say that they need to review, they have a lot of work to do every month. And so the more they know and understand their powers and duties, the less likely they are to go outside of those, if you will.
Thank you. Study session for November 5th will end in just a moment. In preparation for an executive session that we will be going to, we end the study session. I call to order a special meeting. Is there a motion to recess the special meeting and reconvene in executive session?
Sound mode.
Second.
Your second. Okay, thank you.